Well, everybody having the for the good of the order before I hit the gavel, so to speak. All right, all right, let me get started. Here we go. Call to order. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, due to social distancing guidelines and the regulations imposed by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on indoor gatherings. This meeting is being conducted remotely utilizing the Zoom video conference platform. Instructions for accessing the meeting and for submitting public comment were made available on the township's website in advance of the meeting. Please stand and join the public, excuse me, please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection, honoring the servicemen and women who place themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Okay, I will, let's see, entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minute book of the township.
A second.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, please record unanimous vote.
I got Pete as the second. Who was the?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
All right. All right. Okay, let me see, we're all, we're all on board here and-
Commissioner Lee's got his background back.
He does. He's in Colorado. I thought they had, I thought they confiscated his, uh-
No, my private jet was repaired this morning.
Oh, it's good, yeah. Well, thank God for negative interest rates. You get your money back, you get your, you get your, your car back, your, your dog back. Okay. Let's see, and we have no substitute professionals tonight. Okay. Make a few announcements. Due to limitations on the size of indoor public gatherings, all regular and special meetings of the Board of Commissioners and Township Advisory Boards will continue to occur visually, virtually, excuse me, using the Zoom video conferencing platform until further notice. Meeting details and instructions on how to access meetings can be found on the Township's website, which is www.springfieldmontco.org. Concerning our Halloween events, as we continue to feel the long impact of COVID- nineteen and certain restrictions are eased by state and local authorities, the Springfield Township Board of Commissioners would like to ask residents to continue, excuse me, to continue following safety precautions when celebrating Halloween. Traditional Halloween celebrations often involve crowds, close contact between individuals and activities in closed spaces. It is important to plan early and identify safe alternatives for celebrating the fall season. Outdoor activities as opposed to indoor parties and events are recommended. Those planning celebrations are, or participating in Halloween activities should keep in mind public health recommendations of social and physical distancing, wearing masks that cover the nose and mouth, and hand hygiene. Please remember that individuals should minimize interaction and contact with others who are not a part of their household and not, and note that costume masks are not an acceptable substitute for cloth or disposable masks. Also, no one should participate in these activities if they or a household member have a known exposure to COVID- nineteen, are sick or symptomatic, or have been diagnosed with COVID- nineteen, and has not yet met the criteria for discontinuing isolation. Montgomery County has issued some local guidance for safer alternatives to traditional Halloween activities. Residents can find these recommendations by visiting the Township website at www.springfieldmontco.org or the county's website at www.montcopa.org. Later this evening, Commissioner Graham will make a special announcement regarding a fun family event being sponsored by the Parks and Recreation Department as a safe alternative to traditional trick-or-treating in the neighborhoods. Okay, next, some info about the general election. The two thousand and twenty U.S. general election is scheduled to take place on Tuesday, November third. As such, the Montgomery County Board of Elections has confirmed the polling locations for those who wish to vote in person, as well as the locations of mail-in ballot drop boxes. In order to assist residents, Springfield Township has updated its voting and polling places page on the Township website to include links to state and county voter services, voter registration forms, and the county's list of ballot drop box locations. The update also includes a new interactive map that residents can use to find their polling place for the two thousand and twenty general election. If you plan to vote in person, residents should note that some voting locations may have changed from previous years. Please check with state, county, or local officials to confirm your polling place for the general election on November third, two thousand and twenty. Okay. The board is now open to comments or questions from the public. The board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comment will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. So, do we have any comments or questions? We do, Barbara. Barbara, we have, so Barbara sent, Barbara.
Hi.
Yep.
Um. Me again. I don't know if you want me to do this before or after, because I just wanted to give an update on our opioid action committee and a couple of things that are coming up.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Hi, everybody. It's good to see you again.
Barb.
Anyway, we are, have just, we haven't completed, we're still ongoing, a successful community partner program where we're actually placing Narcan at businesses in the community, and they've been incredibly receptive. We've got about eighteen businesses now that have Narcan, and we're in the process of trying to, to get some more Narcan from wherever we can without paying for it, which is a little bit more difficult now than it was before. Opioid overdoses are continuing to go up exponentially, unfortunately, and in this township too, because of what's been happening with COVID mostly. And also, there's a couple of more very, very potent new drugs that are out there. One labeled ISO that's about a hundred times more potent than fentanyl is, they think, that has come over from Asia, and it's becoming more and more prevalent on the streets now and caused many deaths, and they see that going up exponentially also in regard to heroin use and even fentanyl use. So, we have our eyes on that, and we've been talking to the police department about that. So, again, as you all well know, this is still going on, still going on in our township. We are unfortunately can't get into the schools yet, and we're still planning on doing a couple of events with the schools when they're back and, and getting a little bit more settled. They're doing e-blast for us, so we're trying to stay on top of that. One thing that is happening is on October twenty-fourth, there is going to be the National Drug Take Back Day, which will be at the police department again, where anybody can, and I'll email this to all of you. I know I've emailed it to Commissioner Lee, so he can put in his email blast. But they take over-the-counter and prescription drugs that are unused, unfinished or whatever, and, and they dispose of them. It was a huge event last year, and there was, it's amazing how many drugs came in, so that's a good thing. So, we'll be there again. We're also collecting adult clothes and blanket donations for Prevention Point, which is an organization that works out of the Kensington area and around from Philadelphia that we will be providing them, and that was very successful last year too when we worked with the police. So, I just wanted to let y'all know that we'll be doing that again, and that will be on October twenty-fourth. I'll forward that all to you, that maybe you can get out to some of your constituents. We also are, it's also on our Facebook page too, if you want to go on there and look and share. Another thing, and unfortunately Sue Creighton wasn't able to join us tonight. We would like to do in regard to our naloxone distribution. We would, and we're talking about this naloxone and Narcan all the time. I know some of you are familiar with it. All of you have probably heard of it or not familiar with it, and we've come across this a lot when we've talked to, to business owners, and some of them get it and are very familiar about, with it, some of them don't, and are very interested in it, but there's an actual video that we showed that's less than five minutes long, and it shows you how to actually administer Narcan. It's a very simple thing, and you can go on and watch it. And if you want to continue, you can register your name and you can send away for free naloxone. They'll send you a carton, which is two doses of naloxone. So, many of these businesses are also doing that and donating naloxone back to us. So, we would like to next month, either one of your Monday or Wednesday meetings, show you that video, so everybody's familiar with it and can talk intelligently about it. Again, it's probably, it's probably like four and a half minutes long. So, I would like to suggest being able to do that at either your Monday or Wednesday meeting, so you can, you know, decide if you, if you want that to happen or not. We just think it would be a good idea. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Barbara.
Yeah.
Let's see, any other hands up in the audience?
If I may, Mr. President, I'd like to commend Ms. Sins and the entire Springfield Township Opioid Action Committee for the, for the much-needed work that we're doing. I believe, if you don't know, at last count, there were well over, I think there were eighteen overdoses that we had right here in Springfield alone. So, the work that she does is much needed, and I would like to follow up with her mission statement that if each commissioner could watch the video and then request the Norcam and then donate it back to Barb so that she can distribute it amongst all of the businesses here that we have in Springfield. That would be my suggestion, and I'll make it a former motion at next month's public workshop. Thank you.
Okay, Barbara, go ahead.
My pleasure. I really appreciate it. That would be great if you could do that, because it's getting harder and harder to get, and it kind of goes in, and it grows. But I don't know if I sent this information to you, but the overdoses in Springfield by the beginning of July were more than all of the overdoses for the two-year period before that. And while when you say eighteen, that wasn't so much, but for Springfield, that's, that's a lot, and that doesn't include whoever's going over to Kensington and maybe overdosing in Kensington or going to Norristown and happening there and, and things like that. So, unfortunately, it's, it's a very large number, so we, we're, we're trying to stay on top of it, but thank you, and thank you, Eddie, for that.
Thank you. So, so can we, so now how can we watch this video again? Can we, can we, can you send us a copy or can we put it on our website or is there?
You can put it on your website. We can send you a copy. I can also probably share it with you next month. It's a very simple thing to use. So, you tell me which is the best way to do it.
Probably the best way to do it is if you get a copy to Brandon, and then he can distribute it.
Okay.
You know, that's the best way to do it.
Okay, that would, that would be great. And like I say, if you go through the video again, it takes like four and a half minutes. It's, it's very simple to do. Nar, it's just a nasal spray. It's a very simple thing to do, and then they just keep going and fill in your name and say you want some Narcan, and they, they should send it to you. So, okay, that would be great. I'll do that. Thank you.
Great, okay. Any other comments or questions out there? Did we get any, any emails or at all? No, okay. All right, well, then we'll just move ahead to the committee reports. And I, my, I have a report as the chairman of the Community Development Committee concerning the Historical Commission. On December eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township adopted ordinance number nine six two and ordinance creating the Historic Resource Overlay District and the Springfield Township Historical Commission. One of the first acts of the new historical commission was to create bylaws setting forth the purpose, composition, and structure of the commission, as well as the frequency and facilitation of its meetings. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt the September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty bylaws of the Springfield Township Historical Commission. So, that is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, all in favor, please kindly say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, please record unanimous vote. Okay. Next, we will hear from the Chairman of the Internal Affairs and Library Committee, Commissioner Harbison.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a weak signal. If it's, if I'm getting garbled, let me know, and I'll stop the video. That fixes it. First, we have the bill listing. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the September check reconciliation in the amount of five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and one dollars and seventy-nine cents. In the October bill listing, the amount of one million, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any questions on the motion? Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to the two thousand and twenty-one budget schedule. The budget workshop meeting will be one week from today. That's Wednesday, October twenty-first. At seven o'clock PM, the budget presentation will be at our November business meeting, which is Wednesday, November eleventh, at seven thirty PM. Budget hearing in the budget adoption will be at the December business meeting, which is Wednesday, December ninth, at seven thirty. And all meetings will be held by the Zoom virtual meeting platform. Finally, I have item five on the agenda, the Resolution number one five zero five. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution number one five oh five, the Resolution Distributing the Annual State Allocation to the Springfield Township Municipal Pension Plans in Compliance with Pennsylvania Act two oh five of nineteen eighty-four, the Municipal Pension Fund Standard and Recovery Act. Under date of September twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty, the township received state pension fund aid in the amount of four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-nine cents, which will be distributed into the police, salaried, and hourly pension plans utilizing a formula provided by the Township Pension Fund Administrator. That is my motion.
Okay, do I hear a second? Anybody?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the motion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Harbison. Next, we will hear from the Chairman of the Cultural and Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a report for the recycling this month. Pleased to report that during the month of September, two thousand and twenty, Springfield Township residents recycled two hundred and twenty-eight point five tons of materials with a householder participation rate of eighty point nine percent. The net cost to the township was twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-one cents. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Next, we will hear from the Chairman of the Parks and Recreation Resources Committee, Commissioner Graham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two announcements and one motion. The first announcement is on Wednesday, September the second, two thousand and twenty. Bids were received for the Charamonte, for the Charamont Park ADA Improvement Project. The base bids for the project includes the installation of a rubberized playground, safety surfacing material, and an asphalt walkway. Bid alternatives include concrete curving and various single and multicolored options for the playground's surface material. A total of four bids were received, ranging in price from ninety-six thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars for the base bid only to a high bid of two hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three thousand, I mean, two hundred and seventy, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars, excuse me, for the base bid plus alternatives one and two. After reviewing the options available to the board, the township engineer is recommending the award of the, of the base bids plus alternative one. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners award a contract to Plymore Construction Company, Inc. of Plymouth Meeting PA for their low bid in the amount of one hundred and eleven thousand and eight hundred dollars for the base bid plus alternative, one concrete, plus one concrete curving. The project is being funded in part by a grant made available from the Montgomery County Department of Housing and Community Development. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, thanks. Any questions on the motion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the announcement for the Halloween event, which is being called the Hunt for Halloween. The township will host the Hunt for Halloween on Friday, October the thirtieth, from four PM to five thirty PM at the Town Hall Municipal Campus. This is a free family event, and space is limited. Pre-registration is required. The event will follow all Montgomery County Health and the Health Department guidelines for safety, for safety celebrations concerning Halloween, including mask-wearing and remaining socially distanced. Guest attendees include the Ambulance Association, fire companies, police department, Parks and Recreation Department, Township Administration, and library. Registration will begin on Monday, October the nineteenth. Full details regarding this exciting event can be found on the Township website, www.springfieldmontco.org, beginning Monday, October the nineteenth. And I have one more motion. I thought I only had one, but I have two. I want to move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution number fifteen oh six, a resolution authorizing application to the two thousand and twenty Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission and Regional Trails Grant Program for a portion of the trail component of the Merrymade Park Stream and Habitat Improvement Project. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. Are there any questions on the motion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Graham. Okay, next, we will go to the Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, Commissioner Maxwell. I think, I think Commissioner Maxwell is muted.
No, he's not.
Not?
Wake up.
You're up.
He's talking.
Your audio's off.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Do you know sign language?
The mysteries of Zoom.
Not muted.
Strange.
Is this, is his sound system on?
Can you hear us? Yeah, he can hear us, okay.
Now he's muted. Now he's unmuted.
Yeah, but, yeah. Well.
Are, are you, is your sound still hooked up to your headphones or earphones, Mike? Oh, okay. We still can't hear you.
She knows sign language.
Well, let's see. If you, if you, if you don't mind, I could, I could read this. I don't know if anybody else has the report, so I, I'm probably the only one that does, but do you want me to?
Everybody should have the report.
Oh, everybody has. Anybody else want to do the report then, or?
Hey, Mike, if you're, if you're on a Mac, try unplugging the charger. I hear that's a, an issue with Macs.
All right.
He went dark on us.
Technology.
He has the headphones on now. No, still can't hear. No, that's, hmm, that's strange. We have a good joke.
Priest, Rabbi, and a commissioner walk into a bar.
All right, I got two things. Sorry about that. Police Civil Service Commission is the first thing I have. The Police Civil Service Commission is an oversight board created by the Board of Commissioners for the purpose of overseeing the hiring and promotion process within the Springfield Township Police Department, as required by the Pennsylvania First Class Township Code. The Civil Service Commission is charged with establishing testing and selection criteria for all participants, for all applicants for entry level and promotional positions within the police department. The Board of Commissioners is presently accepting resumes and letters of interest for individuals interested in serving as an alternate member of this Police Civil Service Commission. If you are interested in serving on the Police Civil Service Commission, please forward a letter of interest or resume to the attention of Michael Taylor, Township Manager, fifteen ten Paper Mill Road, Winmore, PA one nine zero three eight, or mtailler@springfieldmontco.org in order to be considered for an appointment. Next item I have is Resolution number one five zero seven. I move that the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township adopt Resolution number one five zero seven of Resolution Authorizing Application to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency to fund the purchase of body worn cameras and other equipment for the Springfield Township Police Department. The value of the grant application is thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions on the motion? My question is, do we have to wait for the grant to come through before we can buy the body worn cameras or?
Yes.
Okay.
We have to wait.
How long does that take you usually? What's the timeline on that?
This one, it's pretty aggressive, so we should know within early next year.
Okay. All right, great.
But we're also, we're, we're also including it in, in the budget?
That's correct, Jonathan. It's a fifty-fifty matching grant, so you're applying for thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars, and you're going to appropriate, hopefully, in your capital reserve or in your capital budget, thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars next year as well.
Great.
Is there any reason we wouldn't get approved for this grant? It seems pretty straightforward.
Competition.
Yeah, it's a competitive grant, so there's no guarantees, but we would meet theoretically all the qual, all the criteria for it. So, do they have, is a, a set cap on the total funding that the state will, has here, and is it first come, first served basis?
Not necessarily. There is a, an evaluation criteria based on the sections that we had to fill out. And a thing to note is that this program is an extension of the, the current program. And a thing to note is that this program is an extension of the the current program. So they were awarded additional funding to give out. So this is kind of an extension to that body camera grant program. So I think they have about a few hundred thousand dollars to give out. But yeah, they they have an evaluation criteria.
The intent, though, my understanding, the intent of the grant is to try and encourage municipalities to deploy them as opposed to paying for replacement cameras, for instance, if a department already has them. So
That is correct.
Having them already actually assist us in that regard.
Okay, well, any more questions? Okay. So all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote.
And, Mr. President, can I ask one other question?
Go ahead.
With regards to the solicitation for applicants for the Civil Service Committee, where else would that be advertised?
It'll it'll be on the website for sure, just as we did with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee and the Shade Tree Commission most recently. And we will email that out.
Can we put it on the police Facebook page also?
Sure.
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Maxwell. Okay, next, we will hear from the Chairman of our Zoning Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am pleased to announce that the Springfield Township Zoning Hearing Board will meet Monday, October twenty-sixth at seven PM through our our Zoom platform. We will be receiving testimony on the following applications. The first one is the the application of CIVIC Limited Partnership, owner of the properties located at eleven oh one through eleven twenty-one Ivy Hill Road in Windmore. The applicant seeks a special exception to use the same general character as a boardroom, bowling alley, or other place of amusement pursuant to our zoning ordinance of Springfield. The applicant intends to lease the space to Rage Philly, a smash, splatter, and break items amusement activity, and that was all in quotes. The Throw House, a recreational axe throwing activity, and Philadelphia Gymnastics Academy, who really are the the luckiest of the three groups there, offering gymnastic classes and other gymnastics activity, a use of the same general character as a trade or professional school. The property is zoned within the industrial district of Ward Five. And then we'll also hear the application of Federal Realty Investment Trust, owners of the property located at eighteen forty-two Bethlehem Pike in Flower Town. This is also known as the Flower Town Shopping Center. The applicant seeks a dimensional variance from from our zoning ordinance, seeking approval to reduce the number of onsite parking stalls from the required nine hundred and ninety-nine onsite parking stalls to the proposed seven hundred and two onsite parking stalls. The property currently has seven hundred and thirteen onsite parking stalls. The applicant will also require approval from White Marsh Township. The property is zoned within the Shopping Center District of Ward Six. Both copies of applications and plans are on file with the Code Enforcement Office and can be viewed during normal business hours.
Thank you. And I might just add that, you know, at our last meeting, a month ago, we we had a a meeting with Rob Lewis, who is the attorney for for the applicant. And we discussed, you know, various things that some of the community members and neighbors would be interested in seeing improved on the property. And we learned on at the workshop that most of those items would come through the planning process, you know, once they get through zoning, they have to meet with our planning board. And that that would be the appropriate time for neighbors to come out and talk about that sort of thing, so.
That's my report.
Okay, great. Okay, and finally, we'll hear from the Chairman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have four items this evening. The first dealing with the Shade Tree Commission. On Monday, October twelfth, two thousand and twenty, the Board of Commissioners interviewed two candidates for vacancy on the Springfield Township Shade Tree Commission. While the board was equally impressed with the talent and enthusiasm of both candidates, at this time, only one appointment can be made. Therefore, I move the Board of Commissioners appoint Jamie Corley of Windmore to to fill an unexpired term of service as a member of Springfield Township Shade Tree Commission. Ms. Corley's term of service shall expire on July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you. Any questions on the motion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Second item, I moved that the Board of Commissioners adopt a Resolution number one five zero eight, a Resolution Authorizing Application to the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Multimodal Transportation Fund Grant Program to be used for the construction of the Walnut Avenue Walkway slash Pedestrian Trail. Value of the grant application is one hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and sixteen US dollars and will be utilized to connect the township's existing Sandy Run Park with the township property located at seventeen twenty-five Walnut Avenue, which is to be developed for recreational purposes. That is my motion.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you. Any questions on the motion?
I just got a quick quick comment.
Yep.
And I sort of expressed this on Monday night, but I think this project has moved so quickly through inception to to kind of where we're at now. But I'm just very excited about the opportunity to have a pedestrian walking path that will extend from Orland Mill down to the Sandy Run Park, which will hopefully really connect that park to all the residents on that that side of Orland. And I also wanted to just thank the Sandy Run Golf Club as well, Country Club, for sort of their participation and cooperation and partnership in kind of making this all come into fruition. So that and the hardworking, hard work members of our township and engineers did for this, too. It really has been it's been great.
Yep.
Well put.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thirdly, I move the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution one five zero nine, a Resolution Authorizing an Application to the United States Environmental Protection Agency Brownfields Grant Program. Purpose of the application is to fund the purchase of environmental liability insurance as well as the demolition and remediation of the existing buildings located in former Tank Car Corporation of America property. Final value of the grant proposal will be determined by cost estimates that are currently being obtained for the demolition and remediation of the buildings, as well as the cost of the environmental liability insurance in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. That is my motion.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you. Any questions on the motion?
I just would like to just point out that the sixty-seven thousand, seven ninety-five is for a five-year policy. That's my understanding.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And and I believe that the the grant is capped at five hundred thousand dollars. So theoretically, this could fund anything up to that. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. All right. So on favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. One final item regarding bids for recreational center work. On Thursday, October eighth, two thousand and twenty, a bid opening was conducted for the replacement of the two flat roofs at the Township's Recreation Center. Only one bid was received in the amount of forty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars plus an additional unit cost of six dollars per square foot for rotted deck material. The bid is approximately sixty-eight hundred dollars or seventeen percent over budget plus the cost of any necessary replacement material. After consulting with his staff and a local carpenter, the Director of Public Works is not recommending the award of the bid and instead plans to construct a sloped roof over the existing flat roofs. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners reject the bid received from Mon Roofing Corporation, Headfield, PA, in the amount of forty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars and authorize the Public Works Department to proceed with the construction of two sloped roofs.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, any questions on the motion?
One question. Mike, does this does this create any sort of meaningful storage space and and access to get up there?
Not necessarily storage space, Jim, but it will provide a conduit for putting in some security cameras that we'd like to do. There is like some hidden eaves that'll be built. The the slope on the roofs won't be so large that they would be big enough to to get into there.
Okay, great.
Something you wanted to hide, Jim?
No, of course not. Nothing to hide here. That is my motion.
Okay.
I think we already seconded.
Yeah, we seconded. Okay, so we have questions. And so all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, all opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Very good. All right. So that concludes our committee reports, and the board is now open to comments or questions from the board. So if you wish to make a comment, now would be the appropriate time. Any questions or comments? Hands raised. I don't see anything out there. So then I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Okay, any seconds?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote, and we will see you next month. Thank you.
See you, guys.